So, welcome to, this is session three of our study in the letter to the Romans. No, there were no notes. We're going to continue with the notes we had last time. And I would like to start our session today with a little bit of reviewing from the last time. We're dealing with, you know, difficult concepts here. So I want to make sure everybody fully understands, you know, exactly what it is we're doing and why, you know, what we're saying. So, you know, invariably, whenever you study the letter to the Romans, or when you study any of Paul's work, they are very difficult things. Even apostle Peter in his first letter says, you know, "There are things written in Paul that are very hard to understand." So if he, he had a hard time understanding him, and they were contemporaries, imagine the kinds of difficulty we ourselves might be having after, you know, so many years. And so many different ways of looking at what Paul has to say, by the way, from so many people, there's so many different views of this. So, let's, let's review what's happening in chapter two. Paul has already told us that the world is corrupt, and it's corrupted because God has been left out. And what we need to do, what humanity needs to do is reconnect with God, if they're going to have any kind of hope for salvation. And... But what he wants to do, remember, remember the couple of things we need to remember, is that he's writing to the Romans who are people he does not really know, he's never been there, and so he's trying to explain his gospel. Remember, one of the things he says is he wants to preach his gospel to them. This gospel that he's been given, which obviously Paul thinks of as uniquely authoritative, especially for the nations. So, so he's really going into some length to discuss his own understanding of what's happening in the story of salvation as we move along. So, you'll recall that in Romans, chapter two, he begins this, what we call a speech in character kind of a thing, in which he's not talking directly at people. He doesn't, he doesn't know them, so he's not going to accuse them of anything. He just wants to present an example. So he does something, it's a rhetorical technique called speech in character, in which he, he sets up an imaginary interlocutor, somebody who he's going to speak to, and talk to that person. And then it's up to the audience to figure out whether they fit into the mold or not, you know, kind of a thing. So, that's what we're getting here in the, in chapters two and three, particularly when he talks about Jewish interlocutors, Gentiles. He's speaking to Jews, and he's speaking to Gentiles, and he's speaking to Jews again. It goes back and forth a little bit. Okay? I'll try to identify for you when we hit these different spots, so that we know to whom he is speaking when he says one thing or another. And I think that's very important for us to understand as we go through how Paul describes salvation. He's also going to use a couple of terms that are going to require us to dive into in order to get some, you know, clear understanding and definition of terms like righteousness, which we've talked about to some degree already, and also justification. And later on, impute, this word, impute, which is used again and again and again in one section. So there are, so there are going to be these terms that are going to come up, and we really need to know what Paul is, how Paul defines those words, rather than how they might be used in modern lingo, okay? Because I think there's really some confusion, and has been some confusion ever since the Reformation, to be honest with you. You know, where the reformers had a particular bone to pick with the Roman Catholic Church, and came up with their own definitions of things that have carried, carried through in Christian theology for these last five, six hundred years, in particular. So, we'll, we'll dive into that. As we hit these words, we can stop and talk more about what it is, what it is that he's saying. So, in we go. Let's dive in as best we can. He begins, after he's had this, you know, given this description of the human condition, or at least the Gentile human condition, at the end of chapter one. And then in chapter two, he goes into this whole thing. He says, "Therefore, you have no excuse, every one of you who passes judgment. For in, in that which you judge another, you condemn yourself, for you who judge practice the same things." And we know that the judgment of God rightly falls upon those who practice such things. So he starts off by telling us that we're not judges. We don't, we can't judge anybody, because we're all under judgment. See, he's not saying to them, he's not even accusing them of hypocrisy at this point, maybe later. But he really wants to, he wants to let everybody know that frankly, according to God's standard, we're all under judgment. Everybody has a problem, okay? And he's going to go into it further in the rest of this, the rest of this chapter, okay? So let me get to that. All right. So... So he said, we go, let's go on and say, "Do you suppose this, O man, when you pass judgment on, on those who practice such things and do the same yourself, that you'll escape the judgment of God? Or do you think lightly of the riches of His kindness and tolerance and patience, not knowing that His kindness of God, it's the kindness of God that leads to repentance?" So this is a principle that I think we all really need to understand, that it's God's goodness and His kindness to us that should lead us to repentance. The idea, in other words, that God does not want to judge anybody. What he wants to do is lead us to repent and to return to. Remember what chuvah means. In Paul's mind, when he says repentance, he means chuvah, okay? And this word, chuvah, comes from the word to turn around, okay? So what, what he, what God is always looking for is to draw people back to Himself. If you think about the life of Messiah Yeshua, He did very little in the way of condemnation. For the most part, what He did was, He did what He could to draw others back to the Lord. You know, you can think of lots and lots of people, you know, this sinner or that, you know, the woman who's caught in adultery. He doesn't just condemn her, everybody's condemning her, but He wants to draw her back. You know, go and sin no more, that kind of thing. Or, or, what's his name? Zacchaeus, right? Zacchaeus is this bad guy who's, you know, who's hated by everybody and judged by everybody. Messiah Yeshua does not want to judge him. Zacchaeus, come down, we'll have lunch, let's talk. And he draws him back into the, into the fold of Israel. That's, that's the way God is. God doesn't want to condemn the world, He wants to save the world. God so loved the world that He gave His only Son. So it's all about repentance, it's all about drawing, and that's what we need to, let's think about it being image bearers of Messiah Yeshua, that when we find people in, in bad places, what's the job? The job is not to just drag people down, that's easy enough to do. What we want to do is we want to draw them out. That you can be forgiven, you can, you know, and demonstrate the mercy of God, so that that will lead them to repentance. As Paul says this, "Do you not know that the kindness of God leads you to repentance?" So, this is what God is trying to, when Paul makes this, you know, statement, you know, they're all, oh, horrible. He's not saying, "I want the whole world to go to hell in a handbasket." He's saying, "The world is in this condition." But God is willing to open His heart to this world that's broken and has deserted Him in order to draw them back into, into life with Him. Okay? So I want you to understand this as a principle as we go through the letter of Paul's desire for inclusion in the kingdom of God. Inclusion, not exclusion. Particularly when we get to lot, you know, to nine, 10, and 11, you know, we get over there. Because there's real confusion about what Paul's attempting to do in those, in those three chapters. And everything in the, to my mind, the whole letter is, leads to that and from those three chapters. Everything leads to those three chapters and from those three, three chapters. Nine, 10, and 11 of the book, of the letter, okay? Now he goes on to say, in verse five and following, he says, "But because of your stubbornness and unrepentant heart, you are storing up wrath for yourselves in the day of wrath and revelation of the righteous judgment of God, who will render to each person according to his deeds; to those who by perseverance and doing good seek for glory and honor and immortality, eternal life; but to those who are selfishly ambitious and do not obey the truth, but obey in righteousness wrath and indignation." So, the fact is, is that God, you know, God is merciful and kind. But if that only goes, you know, there is a limit. And if one insists and persists in doing what it is, you know, like they're corruption, they're living corruptly, that they have to pay. Now you remember again, when Moses sees God on the mountain, and we talk about the thirteen attributes of God, back in, it's back in Exodus, chapter 34. You know, one of the things we always don't talk about, or don't talk about enough, is what the last line of that, which is, in Exodus 34, it says, "Then the Lord passed by in front of them and proclaimed the Lord the Lord God, compassionate and gracious, slow to anger and abounding in loving kindness and truth, who keeps loving kindness for thousands, who forgives iniquity, transgression, and sin." So we always go that far, because we like the good part, right? And those are the thirteen attributes of God, up to that word sin, right? Then it goes on to say, "Yet, he will by no means leave the guilty unpunished, visiting the iniquity of fathers on the children, on the grandchildren, to the third and fourth generation." So there is a limit to, to God's, you know, willingness. I mean, you know, the limit is our unwillingness to repent. For instance, remember when Yeshua has a discussion with some people, and he says, you know, "Any sin against the Son of Man will be forgiven, but the sin against the Holy Spirit, that will not be forgiven, not in this world or in the one to come." But the question has to be, what is the sin? Everybody's always wondered, what is the sin against the, what is the unforgivable sin? What is the sin that, against the Holy Spirit? What do you think it is?
Rejection.
Rejection. Okay, that's, that might be, that's one way to put it. Knowing and rejecting, maybe, yeah, okay? The sin of unforgettable, the unforgivable sin is unbelief. You get that, everybody? The sin, the unforgivable sin is unbelief. Anything else can be forgiven, because one can always repent. But if you don't believe, if you don't trust in the Lord, there's nothing that can be done for you. Now, he's, the writer of Hebrews says this quite plainly. He says, you know, "We've been given this great salvation, so like it, but if you reject it, there is no, there is no sacrifice left for sin." If you reject what God has done in Messiah Yeshua, then that's, that's it, there's nothing left. What else do you want me to do? You know, that kind of thing. So... Yeah. You choose. But if you choose not to, then you don't get the benefit of. It's quite, and that's the unforgivable sin. What those people were doing was despite all the, all the proof that Yeshua was giving them for who He was, they refused to believe. And that's not forgivable. If they, if at some point in the future, they wind up turning their hearts, they'll be forgiven. Right? Okay. So... And I just want, I want to remind us all too, in verse six of chapter two, he quotes from Psalm 62. I think that's where that comes from. So, where he, in Romans, Romans, chapter two, verse six, it says, "Paul quotes, 'Who will render to each person according to his deeds,' which is a quotation from Psalm 62." So I want to go back to Psalm 62, so that we can get a clearer understanding of what Paul is driving at when he says that. Psalm 62, well, let's see where it is. So, let me just read it a little bit. It says, "Once God has spoken, twice I have heard this, that power belongs to God, and loving kindness is yours, O Lord, but you recompense a man according to his work." Okay? So, here's the thing.
Which verse is that? 11 and 12?
11, verses 11 and 12 of Psalm 62. Okay? So what is Paul, so what is Paul driving at here? All right? Let's go back into verse five and so. He says, "But because of your stubbornness and unrepentant heart, you are storing up for yourself, up wrath for yourself in the day of wrath and revelation of the righteous judgment of God, who will render to each person according to his deeds. Verse seven, "To those who by perseverance and doing good seek for glory and honor and immortality, eternal life; but to those who are selfishly ambitious and do not obey the truth, but obey in righteousness wrath and indignation." So he's talking about those people who will not repent. Okay, he's talking about unrepentant people who are insisting on this lifestyle that Paul describes in the first chapter, where they've rejected God, rejected the image of God in themselves, and God has given them over to their whatever, their nonsense, and all these other things, which I have to, you know, I have to remember, remind all of us of, because all of us are more guilty of these kinds of things than the former. And that is, "Being filled with all unrighteousness, wickedness, greed, evil, full of envy, murder, strife, deceit, malice, gossip, slanderers, haters of God, insolent, arrogant, boastful, inventors of evil, disobedient to parents, not understanding, untrustworthy, unloving, unmerciful." We're more likely to be kind of like that than maybe some of those former things where, you know, we're, you know, sexually debauched or whatever kind of things. You know, we're, we're more likely to be, you know, a little unforgiving, I'm a little, you know, a little unmerciful, a little, I kind of gossip, you know? You know, a little selfish, you know, stuff like that. We're, we're all guilty of that to some degree. Okay? But even those, even those, I'm sorry. Well, it's in that list. It's in the same list with all those other things. Wow. Those things must be serious, you know, gloms them all together. So we should be careful about all of us, you know, and realize that, look, you know, okay, so maybe we are, we, we exhibit these kind of characteristics, but God takes those seriously too, and that we need to do, we need to do the same. And we need to be willing to see them, things, those things in ourselves and repent, because that's what he's calling for. He's basically saying, listen, repent. You know? And he's saying, "To those who by perseverance and doing good seek for glory and honor and immortality, eternal life, those are the things we need to see, perseverance and doing good, seeking for glory and honor, we will get immortality, eternal life. To the others, judgment." Okay? And then goes on to say, "There will be tribulation and distress for every soul of man who does evil, of the Jew first and also the Greek. The glory and honor and peace to everyone who does good, to the Jew first and also to the Greek, lest there's no partiality with God." In other words, what Paul is concluding for us is, listen, everybody's in the same boat, maybe for some, maybe for different reasons. But we're, we're all in the same boat as far as this is concerned. Later on, when we get to chapter 11, he's going to say, listen, you know, God showed mercy on the Jews, but then He showed mercy on the Gentiles. Why? So He could show mercy on everybody. You know, so everybody's, again, we're all in the same kind of a boat about this stuff, you know, we're not, none of us is free, and we need the Lord to get there. This is not something we achieve on our own, you know? So, okay. So he goes on to say, now the argument starts to get a little thicker and a little more complicated. He goes on to say, in verse 12 and following, "For all who have sinned without the law will also perish without the law, and all who have sinned under the law will be judged by the law. For it is not the hearers of the law who are just before God, but the doers of the law will be justified. For when Gentiles who do not have the law instinctively do the things of the law, these not having the law are a law to themselves. And that they show the work of the law written in their hearts, their conscience bearing witness, and their thoughts ultimately accusing or else defending them on the day when according to my gospel, God will judge the secrets of men from Messiah Yeshua." Okay. So now, here's the thing. So God, God has created standards. See, we have to get, we have, what we, what we have to get to is that when God created the world, He created human beings, all human beings, from Adam onward, with the stamp of His image. We all bear the image of God, Jew and Gentile alike. You got that? Which means that there is innately in the human condition, an understanding, or there should be an understanding of right and wrong. Some people call this natural law. Okay? Of having born that, the image of God. So let me give you a definition of natural law. Well, one definition. Natural law is a philosophy asserting that certain rights are inherent by virtue of human nature, endowed by nature, traditionally by God or transcendent source, and that these can be understood universally through human reason, otherwise because it's part of the image of God stamped on it. As determined by nature, the law of nature is implied to be objective and universal. It exists independently of human understanding and of the positive law of a given state. Now, it gets, now, it's distinguished from civil law, you know, what kinds of laws a government might make, or culture might make. So in other words, there's a stamp in all human beings that God put there. And if you read the first 11 chapters of the Bible, you know that there's some standard by which God expects human beings to live, apart from any law, right? What happens? First, Adam and Eve disobey. Well, God gives them a specific command, and they disobey that. But then, there's no, actually, there's no law against murder, and yet Cain murders his brother, and God banishes him for it. He says, listen, tells him, "Listen, Cain, you're doing the wrong thing. You're thinking the wrong way, bro. You know, like get yourself under control, or, or, you know, it's going to overtake you." And it does, and then Cain is banished. Okay? So we know that God didn't appreciate what He did to his brother Abel. The blood of Abel cries out from the ground. Later on, we see at the, the world gets so bad that God decides to destroy the world except for the family of Noah. Why? Because there is a standard by which human beings are expected to live. So this, so innately burnt into the human condition is this, or this, is a stamp of conscience if we listen to it. But we also have a fallen, if you want to call it that, nature, that we, yezhahara, as it would be understood in, in the Jewish, Jewish thinking. This evil inclination in us, which wars against that better nature, and wins most of the time, by the way. So... That's what, you know, why is the law brought? It's because of iniquity, it says in another place. Okay? Because you people need to have guidelines. Because clearly what's written in the heart is not enough at this time, and it isn't enough without the Spirit of God. Okay? So, we have to, so, so God has standards that were there from created, from created order. That's why Paul can say, you know, listen, if you, "For all who have sinned without the law will also perish without the law." If they, because there's a natural law. It's not, it's not comparing it to Torah. It's not saying that that person who sins is sinning in accordance with some Torah concept or precept, but rather against the law of God, the natural law. You know, there's just certain things that you can't do. And similarly, you can live according to them and be justified, if you will. Okay? So it's, and it also says, "Why, all who have sinned under the law will be judged by the law." By the way, the law is, will be a higher standard. Okay? So listen, so what I did for you was, according to the Talmud, I listed the seven Noah Hyde laws, because every human being are, according to Jewish tradition, let's put it this way. These are the seven laws which were deduced as a result of God's covenant with Noah. When God said to Noah, in fact, let's, let's take a quick look at chapter nine of Genesis, to see where the, you know, how the rabbis, you know, may deduce this. So, the flood is over, the rainbow is set in the sky. They're going, Noah and his family are going to begin again. And God says this to Noah, Noah, the father of every human being on the planet. Okay? Every human being comes from Noah, in a biblical context. Let's start right at verse one of chapter nine. It says, "And God blessed Noah and his sons, and said to them, Be fruitful, and multiply, and fill the earth," exactly what he said to Adam and Eve, right? "The fear of you and the terror of you will be on every beast of the earth and on every bird of the sky; with everything that creeps on the ground and all the fish of the sea into your hand they are given. Every moving thing that is alive shall be food for you. I give all of it to you, as I gave, as I gave the green plant." So God allows the eating of animal flesh from this point on. Every, okay, "Only you shall not eat flesh with the life, with its life, that is, its blood. Surely I will require your lifeblood from every beast, I require it from every man, from every man's brother, I will require the life of men. Whoever sheds man's blood, by man his blood shall be shed. For in the image of God he made man, all men, every single human, every single one, is made in the image of God." This is why there should be, there should be universal equality in the world. "As for you, be fruitful, multiply, populate the earth abundantly, multiply in it." Then God spoke to Noah, okay? Let me see. I need to have any more. No, no, okay. So from these, from what I just read, the rabbis deduce the number of different commands that are incumbent upon all human beings. In other words, if you're going to be a righteous Gentile in, in Jewish terms, you didn't have to obey all 613 of the mitzvah of the Torah. You had to obey these seven things, which they deduce from this text. One, prohibition of idolatry. There's only one God. Right? And God was the one who blessed them. Secondly, the prohibition of murder. You can't murder some- You can't murder somebody, if you murder somebody, then your blood is gonna be shed. Three, a prohibition of theft. I don't know where they get that from, because it doesn't say anything about stealing, but they do. Sexual immorality. The prohibition of blasphemy. The prohibition of eating flesh taken from an animal while it's still alive. And the maintain, the requirement of maintaining courts to provide legal recourse. Now, if you're gonna judge that a man killed another man, you have to figure out how he killed him and who did what to whom, so you need a government. So this is where human government comes from. Human government comes with the fact that you have to lit, you have to litigate. You have to be willing, you have to be able to try people and make decisions about, about. But these were the seven things that were called the Noah Hyde commandments. I'm sorry? Yes, yeah, yeah, this is, this was, I told you, this comes from, I got this list from the, from Talmud. Okay? Well, it's to sefta, so, no, it was, it was, it's, it's more of a midrash. You know, understanding what these laws are. I'd like to see what Rashi has to say, I should have, I should have. Blasphemy, blasphemy is cursing God.
Cursing, but not denying, or?
No, that would be, uh, that would be idolatry, but, but I guess, I guess, you know, yeah, disbelieving in God would be a form of blasphemy. Denying God, denying the existence of God. That's also, then you can find, that you can find that listed on the blasphemy too. You know, so these are all ways in which you can blaspheme God. It's like dishonoring God in some serious way. Okay, so anyway, if I, so if a Gentile did those things, you know, then they're, then they would be considered righteous. That was what would've been required of them. And in fact, when you look at Acts, chapter 15, pretty much that's what the guys say. That's what the, what the apostles say, that all that would be required of Gentiles would become believers of Messiah, other than faith in Yeshua. They had to, uh, they had to follow these Noah Hyde commandments. Uh, they put the thing about not eating things sacrificed to idols in there, because they considered that blasphemous. Okay? So all they were requiring of righteous, of Gentiles believing in Messiah Yeshua to belong to the community was to do these seven things, more or less. Okay? So, getting back to our portion in Romans, back in Romans, chapter two, he goes on to say, all right, so let's, let's continue with this thing. So it says, "For when Gentiles who do not have the law do instinctively the things of the law, like these seven things, these not having the law are a law to themselves. In that they show the work of the law written in their hearts, their conscience bearing witness and their thoughts ultimately accusing or else defending them. On the day when according to my gospel, God will judge the secrets of men through Messiah." In other words, Paul's making an argument here for, you know, if you, you will be judged according to what you know. The enlightenment that you are given. Some people make this argument, that Paul is saying, on the basis of what you know, uh, what you're, and what, if you're, if you're okay with that, you're, 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 you're okay. You'll be judged favorably by God. See, everybody wants to know what's gonna happen to the, you know, the little man in Borneo or something that's never heard the gospel or anything. You can make the argument from this that Paul thinks that as long as that was a good person, decent human being, according to these standards, that such a person would be judged favorably by God. I'm not one of them, I, I am responsible for more than that, so, you know? So, but if somebody were to ask you, then you can say, well, take Paul seriously, you can quote him this way, that not, the guy not having the law are law, and they do instinctively the things of the law, then they'll be okay. Okay? All right. So, let's continue here, because here again, you know, Paul is, you know, I don't think Paul imagined this as any such, such individual, by the way. I mean, that's just me. Because, because the Hebrew scriptures say, there is no one who is righteous, not one. Not one. So I don't imagine, you know, Paul's making, maybe making the argument, but I don't think he believes there is, there is anybody, you know, who is not responsible in one way or another.
You have to be perfect to get this, but no one's perfect.
Yeah, well, he's gonna, yeah, well, I think when we get to the end of all of this, what we're gonna discover is everybody's in the same ugly basket. And without some help, they're not getting out of it. Okay, there's this, there's, there's no way out for them, right? So, let's just find out how deep this rabbit hole goes. All right. So he continues in verse 17 by saying, "But if you bear the name Jew." Now again, now what he does is he shifts his argument. He's making, he was making a general argument. Now, he shifts, he says, okay, you know, let's talk about this hypothetical Jewish person. And again, he doesn't know many of these people, he knows some folks. Uh, but he's not talking to anybody specifically. He wants to make the case about Jews and non-Jews and where each of them stands in relationship to God. Okay? So he says, "If you bear the name Jew and rely upon the law and boast in God and know his will and approve the things that are essential, being instructed out of the law, and are confident that you yourself are a guide to the blind, a light to those who are in darkness, a corrector of the foolish, a teacher of the immature, having in the law the embodiment of knowledge and of the truth, you, therefore, who teach another, do you not teach yourself? You who preach that one should not steal, do you steal? You who say that one should not commit adultery, do you commit adultery? You who abhor idols, do you rob temples? You who boast in the law, through your breaking the law, do you dishonor God? For the name of God is blasphemed among the Gentiles, because of your justice, it's written." So Paul is turning his attention toward this Jewish interlocutor who thinks, I, I, I obey the law, I'm, I'm a good guy, I do the law stuff. Okay, I'm under the law. But if one examines oneself, are you really? Are you really living up to that standard? Okay, now, if a guy could, I imagine if a guy could say, yes, I'm cool. You know, later on, you know, in, in the letter to the Philippians, Paul says this, he says, you know, according to the Torah, I'm perfect. He said that. Okay, the same guy who writes this said that. So I imagine he, he thought that there could be such a person, you have to roll, like him. You know, you look it up, and then in the letter to the Philippians, he says, listen, according to the Torah, the standard, perfect. Okay, here's what he says. Well, here's what he does say. "As to zeal, a persecutor of church, as to the righteousness which is in the law, found blameless." He's talking about Torah. He's talking about, because that's the context in which he's describing himself. Well, he didn't think he was murdering anybody. What he did, what he did, he didn't think he was doing that. He thought he was doing God's work. It's understood, understood. But now he's describing himself, he says, look, he says, "If anyone has a mind," he says, "if anyone has a mind to put confidence in the flesh, I far more circumcise the eight day of the nation of Israel, of the tribe of Benjamin, a Hebrew of Hebrew, as to the law of Pharisee, as to zeal, a persecutor of church, and as to the righteousness found in the law, blameless." You, you see, you wanna, you wanna get technical, but the fact of the matter is, as far as Torah was concerned, as he understood it, he was perfect.
He was understood about himself, he was.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. Well, well, that, well, he's, he's come to the realization, he's come to the realization of that reality. Okay, all I'm saying, all I'm saying is that I, that's why I'm saying. He, he doesn't, when he says all these things about this hypothetical Jewish person, you know, you're being, you know, you're confident that you yourself are a guide to the blind, a light to those in darkness, you know, and all this. He doesn't believe there is such a human being. He knows now it's not him. Okay? Well, he might have thought that way, yes, and that's who he's addressing here. He's addressing, he's addressing this individual. He's addressing someone who thinks, who thinks that by virtue of being faithful to Torah, as they understand it, that they are, they are completely blameless. They're not.
We will be judged according to what we know. And what Paul didn't know, that was when he was doing
Right.
The evil things.
He thought that, he thought those people were blasphemous. Well, he's forgiven, he's forgiven in Messiah.
Trying to explain here, he brings to the conclusion. So everybody under the law, under curse of the law, even if you under the law, I mean, your jurisdiction of the Torah, or you're not on jurisdictions of the Torah, you're under the curse of the law, you need salvation.
What you got?
Okay. Well, again, well, we're gonna get, we're gonna, okay, let's get further into this, okay? So Paul is, what Paul is saying is to this individual, if you think that you, you're covered by virtue of the fact that you are a, you know, under the law, it, it in and of itself cannot do that, does not provide salvation. Okay, we're gonna find out what the Torah does do at some point. Okay?
Didn't, didn't Yeshua also say to the Pharisees, you read the scriptures believing it will give you eternal life, but they testify to me.
Right, yeah, he did say that.
He's the source of eternal life.
Right, exactly. That's right. The Torah is for a different purpose, which we will, we're, we're, yeah, right, correct. So, so he says, so let's, let's move over, so, so you priests, I want you to, all right. So, so he's, he's addressing himself to this particular Jew to point out certain realities of his relationship to God. He addresses his knowledge of Torah. Paul's view of Torah is, is simply put, the word of God. Uh, this is sufficient, this then is sufficient for righteous living. This Jew then commends the, the law, teaches the law to other, and yet breaks the law. What does that say of him? And how does that reflect on God? So furthermore, we are, we are to understand that we must obey the law. Furthermore, are we to understand, this is the question. Are we to understand that we must obey the law perfectly to be acceptable? Or is there something else in view here? This is what I wanna get out of. So ultimately, this Jew or any Jew for that matter, must in the end rely on the grace of God for righteousness. Obedience to God's law results in blessing, disobedience and judgment. Remember, that's the purpose of God's giving the law to, is, one, one of the purposes of God's giving the law to Israel was for their blessing, not for salvation. Salvation was a result of their election by God. That God, in his promise to Abraham and to Abraham's family, God sanctified Israel. Said, "You are my chosen. You are the, you are the elect of God." That was an act of grace. Okay, so the Jewish people are saved, or unquoted, to use that term. We are, we are, we are God, we are chosen by God, thank you. We are chosen by God because of the blessing, because of the promise that God made to Abraham. That's how the Jewish people are separated out for life. He gave them the Torah, at least in part. There are other reasons for Torah, but one of those reasons is to bless them. If you read through the Torah, it says, blessed are you if you do this, bless, bless, bless. He wants to bless everybody. What did he say to Noah? God said, "Be fruitful, multiply," he blessed them. God wants to bless his creations, about blessing. Since the very beginning, everything has been about God wanting to bless his creation. And so he gave Israel the Torah in order that they should live blessed life. "If you do these things, I will make sure that the rains come in the proper time and that your animals are always fruitful and you'll all have all that you need and your enemies will run from you." Then, none of that has to do with eternal life, that has to do with life now and blessed life now. Okay? So Torah serves that purpose. When we do, when we do God's will in life, we live a life that is pleasing to God, God blesses that. Yes, correct. Right, that, right, and that's how God mediates, that's how God mediates his blessing to his creation, through, through his work. Okay? Yeah.
Recognize the sin, which is righteousness. Second of all, cursed who break the Torah. And the third part, the blessed who obey the Torah.
Okay.
No salvation, no justification.
Yeah, you don't get saved by doing Torah. That's correct. All right, so then he goes, let's see where we're at, okay? So, so again, without God's loving kindness, no amount of behavior will suffice to render one righteous and thus enable that one to demand something from God. In other words, and we're gonna see this when he talks to, when he talks about Abraham later. You know, what, what, what is it that our father Abraham has found and so on? Okay? It's not the, like, in other words, okay, I'm gonna behave like this, God, and therefore you owe me this. You owe me this. It's not, it's not like that. Okay? We, God blesses us through doing things. It's a, it's, it's inherent in the commandment. That's, that's right. By doing what God says, the blessing is inherent in the command, in the doing of the command, the mitzvah. That's where it's, that's where it resides, exactly. That's exactly right. So, this is what he's driving at. So you're, you're this hypothetical Jewish guy and you think, yeah, I'm a real, you know, I live under the Torah, I'm better than you, and I, you know, blah, da, 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 da. Let you, let me just tell you all of this stuff. In the meantime, you know, you're trying to circumvent the law wherever you can, you know, and there are lots of people like that. You know, and it gets you know, and it gets you know exactly nowhere. In fact, it's worse, because really, he ends the thing by saying, "For the name of God is blasphemed among the Gentiles because of you." All right, because of your disobed, because you're supposed to live according to a particular standard and you don't. See, and this is why, you know, I mean, people, you know, do that now, among religious people, with religious people, right? You're constantly holding us to a higher standard than they would ever expect to live up themselves. And when we don't, then they're all over us. And you know, they're not wrong. They're not wrong, because if we're sitting there saying that we're, you know, we're somehow representative of God, and then we're behaving in ways that demonstrate that we're not, it does, it, 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 it reflects on the law. And that's no good. Right? I think we can all agree with that. Okay? So let's continue here. What are we doing? Okay, so in Romans, two, beginning in verse 25, it says this. It says, "For indeed circumcision is of value if you practice the law. But if you're a transgressor of the law, your circumcision has become uncircumcision." So again, he's, he's continuing to talk to this Jewish person. Okay, so again, this is what we have to understand. He's talking to this Jewish guy while the Gentiles are listening. But he's talking to the Jewish person, and we gotta keep that in mind, what he says. And I think this is what happens, the way, why, why people begin to misinterpret some of the things that Paul some of the things that Paul says, because he, you know, he's no longer talking to that just Jewish person, he's talking to everybody. Okay? But let's try and keep our perspective here. So he says, for indeed circumcision is of value if you practice the law. But if you're a transgressor of the law, your circumcision has become uncircumcision. So if the uncircumcised man keeps the requirements of the law, will not his uncircumcision be regarded as circumcision? In other words, see, here's a, here's again, Paul's use of terminology, and I wish he would have come up with some better words. I really do.
This is all Jewish argumentation.
It is.
This is Jewish.
No, no, I agree. I agree. It's like Pilper, this guy.
That's right.
You know, uh, you know, uh, it's. It was Pilper. I thought it was Pilper. But you know, it's just, you know, back and forth argument, but, but here's what, I wish he would have used a different word than circumcision. Because what he means by circumcision? What is the circumcision? Why do we circumcise our sons on the eighth day? Why do we?
It was a covenant.
Covenant!
Yeah.
Thank you. It's a sign of the covenant. That we are in a covenant relationship with God. That's what it's about.
Rabbi, that says, you mean all the descendants of Israel gets all the oil and we have to cut what?
Well, anyway, that's funny. Well, that's why you did on the eighth day, you never remember. You never think about it. You cry for two seconds, then they give you wine and it's like all better. Yeah, we give the baby a little wine and only shuts right up. My grandson didn't even make a sound. I said a sound. Yes!
Yeah.
He gave me a little funky look on his face because it wasn't the sweet wine. I'm having a sweet wine, so yeah, he got a little, like, good stuff, but he was like, you know, I didn't even, he didn't even cry. But anyway, so the point here is that whenever, when you see this word circumcision in the argument that Paul is making, substitute the covenant thing. This notion that you're in a covenant relationship with God. Okay, because look, weren't there women in this audience? I know they're circumcised, you know? There must have been, and I know, but just from the names at the back of the book, you know, that there are, there are Jewish women there.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
A number of years ago, there was a group of people, in fact, I think I heard it here, a group of people in Israel that was taking the New Testament, the original Greek, going back into Hebrew.
Yeah, yeah.
To get the original Hebrew.
Jerusalem School of Synoptic Research, where a group of guys.
Played it back into English. Did that ever happen?
Well, what, they're, the way in which they, they never came up with their own version of the scriptures, if that's what you mean, but they did a lot of writing and still do regarding the language of it, it, the Bible, how to understand the difficult words of the issue I have.
But they didn't go back to the original Hebrew?
What they, what they did was they said, uh, the Greek of the, of the New Testament, particularly the synoptic gospels, is bad Greek. And what, it makes more sense if you would have translated into Hebrew, because then these Hebrewic idiomatic expressions all make sense and all those kinds of things. So they believe that the source for the synoptic gospels, in other words, Matthew, Mark and Luke, um, have, had a Jewish source, that there was a Jewish account, which we don't have. Okay? And that they use, partially, they use that as a source for what they wrote. And so when you go back and you translate some of the sayings of Yeshua into Hebrew, oh, now it make, now that idiom, idiomatic expression makes sense. The use of that word makes some sense, you know, that kind of thing, because in Greek it doesn't make much sense.
Gets translated into English, law.
Yeah.
Because back then, the Greek word for Torah didn't have, they didn't.
No, they had no nuance. No, it's just, no, they just call it nomos. And, yeah, nomos is.
Everybody are nomos. In the Book of Romans.
Yeah.
There's the six laws.
Yeah.
And everywhere is a norm.
Yeah.
But it's the things different totally, absolutely different.
They're talking about different things, and we're gonna talk about that when we get to certain parts. We'll get into that argument. But let's continue here. So. So again. Uh. So if the uncircumcised man keeps the requirements of the law, will not his uncircumcision be regarded as, as if he were in relationship with God? That even though he's kinda not in relationship with God, yet he, he's in a, in relationship with God. Whereas if the person who's in a relationship with God acts unlawfully, doesn't that countermand, you know, his covenant, you know, his covenantal status? If you will. Okay? All right, verse 27, and he who is physically uncircumcised, if he keeps the law, will he not judge you, who though having the letter of the law and circumcision are a transgressor? So he's saying, now, that person has the right then to say, you're out, now I'm, I'm out, uh, you're out and I'm in. You know, that kind of thing. For he is not a Jew who is one outwardly, nor, nor circumcision, that which is outward in the flesh, but he's a Jew who is, who is one inwardly, and circumcision is that which is of the heart, by the spirit, not by the letter, and his praise is not from men, but from God. Now, I want you to understand the link, the linguistic change here. He's not referring to circumcision anymore, he's referring to a Jew. Okay, who's a Jew and who isn't? Now. He says, he is a Jew who is one outwardly. He's talking, remember, he's talking to a Jewish person, some imaginary Jewish person. He's talking to a Jew. He's not saying to everybody, oh, here's how it works. You're the true Jew if you just do the law, or you do the, you know, you obey properly. It's one outwardly. Okay? He's saying Jews, if, if, true Jewish people are going to be obedient to God. Okay? Because here's where, one of those places where the, the misinterpretations have really abounded. Oh, so those of us who are believers in Messiah, Yeshua, regardless of whether we're Jewish or not, we're the true Israel. We're true Israel. And we appropriate, therefore we appropriate all of God's promises to Israel for ourselves, is what they do. That's not what Paul is saying here. He's talking to a Jewish guy. He's trying to get through to this dude. That, that, in order for us to be fulfilled in our covenantal responsibilities, we have to do what God has demanded. Okay? So. Right, he's talking to a Jewish person. He's gonna, he's gonna turn his attention to the non-Jewish person. You know? He does that. He goes back and forth, like I said, between a Jewish interlocutor and a, and a Gentile, and then, you know, we'll see where we wind up at the end of chapter four. You know? Okay? So. Uh, let's see where I wanna. Right. So I think I did all of that. Okay. So let me read my last paragraph. He says, so now we remember that Paul began this segment speaking to a Jew, and he concludes it speaking to that same particular Jew. Thus he tells him that a true Jew is one who is both circumcised, as a sign of God's grace upon him, in being born into the covenant people, and obedient to God's word. So in other words, circumcised both inwardly and outwardly. That's a true, that's a Jew. Not a Gentile who's, you know, doing good stuff, becomes Jewish. Doesn't, that's not how it works. Okay? Remember.
Not that he becomes Jewish, but if he's obedient to God, he has the same, he's in that.
He has, he has a relationship. He will have a relationship with God.
Yeah.
Most important part, circumcision part.
Right, right.
Doesn't matter where you're inside. While you're on the flesh, doesn't mean you're a Jew, according to that God's definition of this word. What's a Jew mean? Who prays God? So he prays God with his life, by obedience to God.
Okay.
It's what he's talking about.
So in verse 29, following, he says, but he is a Jew, who is one inwardly, and circumcision is that which is of the heart, by the spirit, not by the letter, and his praise is not from men, but from God. Okay? Now. Imagine yourself as a Christian, a Gentile. Christian's an anachronistic word at this point in history. And you're listening to this. You know, you're one of the Gentile people in the, in the Roman congregation. And you're licking your lips because you're thinking, wow. You know, these Jews, they're really in trouble. Right, we're, and we're completely right about our, our attitude toward it all. All right. So Paul starts in, 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 in chapter three, verse one. He says, then what advantage has the Jew? Or what is the benefit of circumcision? What is the benefit of this covenant to have? Great in every respect. First of all, that they were entrusted with the oracles of God. Right? So Paul turns to speak to a Gentile interlocutor, who may be thinking, boy, those Jews have real, have problems. So, and God has abandoned them for disobedience. That's what, that, that they think, right? Because after all, the way he's described this Jewish guy, he's not in very good shape. Okay?
Many theologians, do they just block out the portion?
Of course, why not? You know, take out what you like and leave the rest behind, and then, and you can make your, your argument. This is what everybody does with the Bible. Everybody takes their part of the Bible and emphasizes what they wanna do without, look without, you know, reference to the rest of it. And then they come up with, you know, these conclusions that frankly don't hold water.
It surprises me in the Bible, we, we hear about causing the Jews to be jealous, but never in the Bible do I see causing the nations or the Gentiles to be jealous, because I can tell you.
But it says a lot of stuff about being a light to the nations and about being example and for the Jewish people to be so, to the nations and so on and so forth. So, you know, it goes back and forth. But, you know, we, in order to, for that to be true, in order for that to happen, you have to actually exemplify and reflect the true qualities of God to others. If you do that, then yeah, they're impressed. Otherwise, they just make, they mock. Right?
Well, not just impress, envious.
Well, well, you know what I mean? You know, you know what I mean? So, okay. Right, so God has abandoned them for their disobedience. So the Romans, the Roman believers are treating the Jews in their midst as if, uh, they, they as a people have been abandoned by God. This is how they're treating the Jews. The roots of superstition have begun to sprout, and Paul intends to head, head this way of thinking off. So he explains the advantages that the Jews continue to have. Right? One. So it says, they were entrusted with the oracles of God. Okay? The Jews were entrusted with the word, the law, the prophets. And you know what? The Jews have been faithful in preserving that word and in fact, in sharing it with the world. In fact, if you think about it, the whole of scripture, New Testament and all, if you want, you know, is all Jewish, all Jewish people. And without the Jews, there would be no Bible. There'd be no new covenant. And the Jewish people were the first ones to spread the word. And Paul himself was a Jew who was responsible for getting it in Asia and, and the West. So. Come on. You know, the Jewish people have been faithful about it. You know, let's, let's give credit where credit should be due. All right? Um, they're the ones with whom God made his eternal covenant. In other words, as we've already explored, God made promises to Abraham, which encompass Abraham himself as physical descendants, and now the families of the earth, to the Jew first, and also to the nations. So he goes on to say, in verse three and following, what then if some did not believe? Their unbelief will not nullify the faithfulness of God, will it? May it never be. Rather, let God be found true, though every man be found a liar, as it is written, that you may be justified in your words and prevail when you're judged. So what does this mean? God does not abandon his people when they're disobedient. It doesn't work that way. God, God is faithful even when Israel is not. All throughout the ages, and this didn't stop when Yeshua came. So this is the whole thing about, you know, uh, people thinking, well, okay, well, you, you know, the whole thing with Yeshua, I haven't, and their complicity in his crucifixion and all those, that was the straw that broke the camel's back.
Yeah.
But no. It's not true.
Because they're thinking like people, like human beings, that's, you know, as human beings, it's like tit for tat, you know? You do this, then I'm gonna do that. But that's not the way God works.
No.
God is righteous no matter what we do. And he loves us no matter what.
That's, God is correct. Right, remember, and, and, and it says, it says in 2 Timothy, chapter two, says, if we are faithless, nevertheless he remains faithful, for he cannot deny himself. So this is who God is. He made a promise, and he's keeping it, one way or another. Okay? And by the way, the Gentiles better hope this is true. Because if God is willing to break his promises to Israel because they were, that is, proved to be unfaithful, it ain't gonna go any better for the Gentiles when they break, when they, when they go wrong, which inevitably we all do. Okay? So they better hope that God is a faithful God, keeper of promises, even when we mess it up. Okay? So. I'm sorry.
You emailed them to us, but I guess they didn't get printed out.
Oh, you didn't. I, I'm sorry. You'll have to just trust me. I'll get the notes. I'll, I'll, I'll get you copies. Um, all right. So. Let me, okay. So it's. Yeah, okay. Let's continue. So it says in verse five and following, but if our unrighteousness demonstrates the righteousness of God. Okay, think about it. If our unrighteousness demonstrates the righteousness of God. Now, I wanna think about that. Remember when we were talking about, oh, this is why I wanna get, guys, I wanna get terminology cleared up. The way Paul uses language in his letters. So you'll remember, I have to refer you back to Romans, 6, Romans 117. Okay? And in 117, it says, for the righteousness of God is revealed from faith to faith, as it is written, the righteous man shall live by faith, right? So here he uses this term righteous and righteousness. And we said what it meant. Do you remember what I said it meant? God as promise keeper, yes. Okay?
My faithfulness?
Right, but we call the faithfulness of God, God the promise keeper. So when we look at it here, but if our unfaithfulness, right, because we were disobedient to God, demonstrates the faithfulness of God, when he says righteousness, right? He says righteousness, but it's not righteousness, it's faithfulness, because earlier, he just told you that, you know, um, let God be found true, though every man be found a liar, right? And I, and I just said, I quoted from 2, from 2 Timothy, if we're faithless, he remains faithful because he can't deny himself. This is God. So this can be understood, the righteousness of God is his faithfulness in fulfilling his promises. Not he is the utterly right, he's always right. But we know he's always right. But that's not what's being said here. Nor are we ever right. So when we talk about righteousness, we're talking about faithfulness. Okay? Just to clarify Paul's use of terminology, this is where a lot of confusion comes in here. Because you see, you know, everybody thinks this is all about justification, about being declared, you know, uh, innocent. So. So here it's about, talking about faithful action. So, but if our unrighteous, our being unfaithful demonstrates the faithfulness of God, what shall we say? The God who inflicts wrath is not unfaithful, is he? Unrighteous, is he? I am speaking in human terms. May it never be. May it never be, or otherwise, how will God judge the world? But if through, am I going too far? Okay, yeah, I am. Okay. So. We talked all about this righteousness and faithfulness and fulfilling his promises. So with it, with this in mind, Paul explains that God's faithfulness, even in the light of the faithlessness of his people, he still has the right to judge. He still ha, you know, you understand that Paul is, is making the case that in any of these circumstances, God has the right to judge his creation. And we are ultimately, we have to conclude that we're all under judgment. We're going to get there. Okay? So indeed, judgment is part of the faithfulness of God. This is my claim. That his judgment is part of God's faithfulness. Remember what we said in that portion from Exodus, chapter 34? He will by no means leave the guilty unpunished, visiting the iniquity of fathers on the children, on the grandchildren to the third and fourth generations. God is right and, and faithful when he judges. The one I quoted was from Exodus, chapter 34, verse 7. Okay? So, see, this is the whole thing. When we talk, like for instance, when we talk about Torah and talks about the curse of the law, there is a curse in the law. The whole law, the law is not a curse, but there is a curse in the law. Okay? This, this is the distinction that has to be understood when we get to that discussion. He'll talk about that in chapter six and seven. We'll get, when we get there. Okay? So there is that, but it's the same thing here. God, part of God's faithfulness is God as judge. And that he has the right to judge because he is faithful. He has the right to judge you, me, and everybody. Okay? All right. Let's, uh, we got 10 minutes. Okay. But if through my, then he goes on in verse 7. But if through my lie, the truth of God abounded to his glory, why am I also being judged as a sinner? And why not say, as we are slanderously reported and some claim we say, let us do evil, that good may come. Their condemnation is just. What then? Are we better than they? Not at all. We've already charged that both Jews and Greeks are all under sin. As it is written, there is none righteous, not even one. There is none who understands. There is none who seeks God. All have turned aside. Together they become useless. There's none who does good. There's not even one. Their throat is an open grave with their tongues they keep deceiving. The poison of acid is under their lips, whose mouth is full of cursing and bitterness. Their feet are swift to shed blood. Destruction and misery are there in their path. And the path of peace they have not known. There is no fear of God before their eyes. Yikes. Now, if that was all from one place, it would be a problem. It's not. Paul does something here that rabbis do, have been doing forever. And that is clip scriptures in order to create a narrative. Midrash. It's a midrashic use of text. You know, when somebody does, when I do a sermon or somebody who does a sermon, we all do this, right? We take little bits, pieces of scripture here and we try and put it together into coherent story to tell if, you know, tell a tale or whatever. And that's what Paul is doing here in demonstrating, demonstrating that his char, his charge that both Jews and Greeks are all under sin. So this is what he's saying. In the end, his conclusion is that everyone is under judgment. Or let's put it this way. God has the right to judge everyone for their, the way they've been, because they're all of this. Not none righteous, not even one, so on, so on, so. So Paul tells what, no one can truly make a claim to righteousness on their own. Nobody, Jew, not Jew nor Gentile. It's a problem, in other words, that God, God, everything is a product of God's mercy. Any hope we have is going to be a product of God's mercy on us. He constructs an argument from scripture using, you know, I told you, using rabbinic technique of constructing narrative from scriptures. Uh, this narrative concludes that no one can claim righteousness through the law. Thus, both Jews and Greeks as a whole, at least stand, can't stand condemned. And I've, uh, in the paperwork I gave you, I, I, I give you the scriptures where he took all of that stuff from. Comes from Psalm 5, Psalm 140, Psalm 10, Isaiah 59, Psalm 36 is, it's just a whole clipping, you know, clipping and pasting. Right? So let's, verse 19 and 20 here. Says, now we know that whatever the law says, it speaks to those who are under the law, so that every mouth may be closed and all the world may be accountable to God. Because by the works of the law, no flesh will be justified in his sight. But through the law comes the knowledge of sin. I would like to spend a couple of minutes on this. That's what he's saying, let, uh, let's see what he's saying and what he is not saying. He's, you see where it says, because by the works of the law, no flesh will be justified in his sight. Justification does not come from, now, okay. So here's what we have to get into Paul's use of another term. Justified. Okay? What does that word mean? Justified.
Without blame?
Okay, that's the way you were taught. Okay? Anybody else?
Righteous in God's eyes.
Okay. Another way to look at it. Let me argue that all of those terms refer to, to traditional Christian ways of thinking about this word. I'm going to give you an alternative to think about. There are two ways to look at justification. One is in forensic terms, which is what all of you just described. When I say forensic, means like in a court of law, that you are now declared innocent of whatever your crime is. Okay? And this is typically the way this is looked at. As if Jews, for instance, thought that by doing this, they would be declared innocent of any crime before God. Okay? That's not why Jews did Torah. You can't find that in Jewish writing anywhere. Okay? So Paul is saying, and he's making the argument that doing Torah doesn't, that's not what's, that's not what, doesn't. It's circumcision of the heart, remember that? Right? So what he's saying here is that you cannot be, that's not covenant. That's, let me put it this way. That's not where the relationship that God has with Israel begins. The Jewish people were God's people, chosen by him before they ever received the Torah. When, when they were in the, when they were in, in the, in the body of Abraham and Sarah, they, they were already chosen to be God's people. That's what, in other words, all Israel, like when I said, all Israel has a place in the world to come. And some, some of you had questions regarding, you know, what I meant by that. Is that God chose the people, elected Israel to be his chosen people as an act of grace because of his love for Abraham.
And is that what justified them?
That's what justified them. Our justification comes from that. This is justification. Yes. It's a, it's a gift of, of God's sovereign choice. It's more like, more like, you know, God makes a sovereign choice.
Another way that I look at it is that God knew what Israel was going to do. And Israel was a window to humanity to say, okay, you guys do this, this is what's going to happen as it has happened to Israel. Now, having Israel done what God knew they would do to be an example to humanity, is he going to turn around and say, okay, you did what I wanted you to do, but now I'm going to get rid of you because you did it? No.
Well, no, again, again, it's God's faithfulness. God's faithfulness is not dependent on the faithfulness of humans.
Exactly.
Okay, he's, he made a promise and he's going to keep it. Okay.
Going back to God chose the people of Israel because of the acts of Abraham.
Yes.
God chose Israel because he chose Israel.
Because he chose them.
It was God's great.
You know, why did he choose, why did he choose Abraham? He, he chose Abraham because, because he's God and he can. You see, this is the thing. There's an argument made, this really interesting argument made in a book called The Body of Faith by Michael Bischoff. And he says, you know, when people ask the question, why did God have to do it the way he did it? It's a dumb argument because, because he, because he wanted to. In other words, when they say, when they say, well, you know, like, why did God, like, the, the story of Messiah, you know, why did his son have to die? Why couldn't he have done it some, a easier way? What, who are you, old man? To determine how it is that God ought to do something? He made, he made a, he made a choice to do something in a particular way. It's not for us to say, oh, it could have been done better. By whose standard? Mine? What makes me smarter than him? You know?
No, that actually the crucifixion of the Messiah sure proves that faithfulness of God in this way, and we'll do it later in the Romans. And also, it's revealed that God cannot change himself, like we just read it.
Yeah.
So it's no way.
But also trying to show us, people who cannot be absolutely faithful ourselves, how can we believe there's a God that's that faithful, more faith, so faithful that we can't understand it? He has shown us through the faithfulness to Israel. That's his example to us because we are unfaithful.
So let's continue with this. He says, no, by works of the law, no flesh will be justified in his sight. And then he goes on to say, for through the law comes the knowledge of sin. Now, this is one of those statements that I wish Paul had, had made a different way. Because people have zeroed in on this as the purpose of Torah. This is not the purpose of the law. It, it is a, it is a result of the law being there that it does, it does in fact, that we have the knowledge of sin by, by it. Paul says in another place, you know, you can't break the law where there is no law. Okay? Where there is no law, how, how am I supposed to know? He says, you know, because, because God said thou shalt not covet. I know, I discover covetousness, covetousness. It's true that when you shine light on something, it's going to show up what's there, right? So when we shine the light of Torah on the deeds of men, it shows that the evil of it. But that's not its purpose. That wasn't the purpose of Torah. What did you say earlier? What was the purpose of Torah? Blessing. Blessing that in, in the doing of the mitzvah, the blessing is.
Torah revealed that all lies.
Okay. So let's, so let me describe a couple of things. One. When God created the world, he created this perfect environment, right? The Ghanid Den, the Garden of Eden. And there it tells us that he walked in the school of the day. You know, he was there. God was with, with Adam and Hade. He was there in the garden with them, fellowshiping. When they sinned, not only did they leave, God left. God didn't stay and sit in the garden by himself. He left. And he left his world, the world that he wished to occupy because of sin. Because God cannot abide sin. The, the holiness of God cannot abide the presence of sin. All right. So. So when he, when he, when he, when he, when he pulls the children of Israel out of Egypt and sets, and brings them to the mountain, the mountain to give them Torah, their first job is to build the Mishkan. Right? So they build this Mishkan and they have to do all these incredible acts in order to make it pure, to make it a, 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 a holy spot in the midst of the unholy world in which we live, so that God can occupy that space. Because right at the end of the book of Exodus, the, the shekina, the, the presence of God comes down on the, on the thing, blows Moses right out of the room. Okay? So much, much of the Torah is about the holiness code. That's most of it. And, and the holiness code about, about the Mishkan and then about the priesthood and then about the people who are going to, who are going to be the caretakers of the presence of God in this world. All because God wants to dwell in the midst of his people. This is why, this is, this is the main reason for Torah. And God wants to bless his people, the people who are doing this work for him. There's chosen people and they need to be a light to the nations, to draw all the nations to him. So if Israel had been completely obedient, they would have flourished and the world would have been drawn to God. That was the way it's supposed to work. So they have, so, so it's functioned that first to provide a place where God could dwell. Secondly, to keep the people holy. Thirdly, that the people should be alight to the nations. And fourthly, to bless those people in their work. This is the real reason for Torah. Does it show up sin? You bet it does. Of course it does, like shining a light in a dark place. All of a sudden, all, all the cockroach just comes scrambling. Okay? So it does do that. So when Paul says this, he's not lying. It's true. We have the knowledge of sin, but that was not its purpose. The unfortunate problem is, is that traditional interpretation has grabbed hold of this one phrase, one lousy little clause, and made a doctrine out of it. Oh, this is the purpose of the law. We don't need that anymore. Okay? But that's not what Paul is saying. So what Paul is saying, what he is not saying. That no one is justified in his sight. It wasn't for that purpose of justification. It was to keep the justified people of God holy. That's what it was. Okay? All right. All right. I think we've had enough.
Those four reasons that you just gave, are they cited in the notes?
No. I don't think I did, cited them specifically the way I just did.
We can slowly again, that's like.
Oh, God. It's being recorded.
Be a light. Those two I got. To be a blessing.
Blessing, the, it's, all right, let me do it again. All right. So. The first purpose of it was to, for the people to be holy so that they could be, so that they could maintain God's presence in their midst. Secondly, to keep those, the people of God holy, so that they, so that God could dwell with them. Thirdly, that by doing so, they would draw the nations to the, to the light of God. And fourthly, so that God could bless them in their work. These are the main purposes of Torah. All right. I think we've had enough for today.
It was good.
Okay, so we're going to end it there. And next week, I'm going to be in Florida enjoying the sunshine, so I won't be here.
Actually, that email you sent. And there was no attachment to it.
No, there wasn't an attachment. I'll get, I'll make sure everybody gets the notes next time. I promise. All right, so, uh, let me just. All right, so let me just, we'll end the recording part of this. Okay, well, for anybody who's listening online, on the line, there will be no class next Shabbat. We'll continue this the week after. Okay?